About 2013, the rate, the time now is 5:49 about 5:15. This time, public hearing, open for discussion.
In three, two, one, action.
There are no comments regarding the rate. I will take the motion. Please, the sun was in full, do you agree? I entertain a motion to adjourn from the public hearing. We will not sign this motion. May Councilwoman Sampson say it?
Aye.
Second, Councilwoman McCaffrey, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You are. Councilwoman McCall, agenda town council meeting of Mayor and Board Select, about eight, 2013, approximately six o'clock, 4:00 PM. At this time, we state that our intervention is sought from Sampson, one. Councilwoman Lyle Wade, District Two. The record reflecting is not present. Councilwoman Donovan Calvert, District Three.
Present.
Councilwoman Carlyle Sampson, District Four.
Present.
Councilwoman Patricia Dickens, District Five. Here. Also, we have Chief Police, Chief Russell Bill. City Attorney, Attorney Mark Patillo. Soaring waters of hazard, Mr. Paul Young. Police of Foster Town, Attorney General Mayor, Michigan State, and official adjournment for the town of Homer, Hager, Dunes, and St. Andrews. Have you reviewed the minutes from... Olivia? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, I missed, please excuse me. Also, Streets of Justice, Lee Wells. Okay, a motion approved June 5th and June 26th minutes. Have you reviewed those minutes? Are there any corrections? Please take it at this time. Any correction on the minutes? Everything okay? Keep moving forward. No corrections on the minutes from the 5th and 26th? Now, entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Councilwoman Mozik, second. Second by Councilwoman McCaffrey, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Over here. This time, I have other comments. For three minutes, we state your name and address. And what were your comments? Being that there are none, we will proceed with the agenda. There are no old business, so we'll be down to the new business. New business. Title A, adoption resolution, number 13, that's 006. We just had the public hearing until 5:40, 6:00 PM, 49:00. Military rate remain the same at 8.330. No further questions? Entertain a motion, Councilwoman. Second.
I'll second.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Sampson, second by Councilwoman Jenkins, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries. Okay, Attorney Hall, your time. Next, we have the adoption of resolution 13, that's 007. For Sampson, as I already answered the question, I can't answer it.
Happy to help. Madam Mayor, thank you, and Members of the council, thank you. What is before you is a resolution regarding a 218 agreement with the Internal Revenue Service, specifically because the Homer Memorial Hospital is municipally owned. This is an agreement that requires the town homeowners' approval. Previously, at the Homer Memorial Hospital, all employees were not... Social Security or private health from their checks, because they were municipal employees. Now, though, the option has been available to the hospital employees, either participate in the social security system, or to not participate in the social security system. So, the way that works, it's an all-or-nothing proposition. So, the IRS required the Homer Hospital to have an employee vote. And the employee vote was that they participate in the social security system. So, as a result of that, the 218 agreement affirms or codifies the vote of the Homer Memorial Hospital with regard to whether, to what extent, the employees thereof would participate in the social security system. So, that's what we have.
So, even though, it's an option, even though the town was...
No, it wasn't. It was an option for the employees of the hospital, that they had to vote. In other words, they had to give thumbs up or thumbs down. The majority prevailed, and that's the way it works.
So, everybody participated?
Yes, ma'am, everybody's got to participate. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. You can't have one employee opting out, one employee opting in. It's an all-or-nothing proposition.
So, they're not considered municipal employees anymore?
Oh, no, they should be considered municipal employees. Nothing would let you change. The only thing this resolution does is say that even though they are municipal employees, they're going to have social security with health from their paycheck. And they'll be, once they get their 40 quarters in, like anybody else, they're going to be subject to social security retirement at the end of the day.
Oh, no, no problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Carlyle? Put you on the spot.
I was just, well, curious, because apparently this was decided when it started.
Oh, no, it was decided on the vote. And in other words, there are two ways that you can change from the old. The IRS either requires it, given some change in circumstances to the employer, or the employees actually voted to change it. In this situation, the hospital employees collectively voted to do this. And then, it needs to be approved in a formal resolution ratifying that vote, and that's what the resolution is. We'll do that.
When they started, the hospital, they opted to go with the town.
That's right, that's right. But that changed, maybe five, six years ago, seven years ago, when they went from the municipal informal retirement system, and now they're going to a 401K defined contribution plan, where they do the holdings plus the hospital matches, whatever they contribute, as opposed to what municipal employees say, which is the defined benefit plan. They pay a certain amount, employer, employee, you get a defined benefit, or X amount of dollars, sixty-sixty-three, ten years salary, or something like that. And that changed about eight years ago, and that's five, six, seven, eight years ago. That's what put the hospital employees in a situation where they can now opt for social security, since they're not doing that anymore. Just may.
So, the agreements between the IRS and Homer Hospital, not Homer Hospital and the social security administration?
It's both. The IRS has just required it, I can't remember who the...
Okay, so the IRS required it, but it's between the hospitals.
That's right. Exactly. The IRS required it because there was no formal document signifying what the employees needed to do. And because it's a municipally-owned hospital, it wasn't something that the board could ratify that agreement, but ultimately, it has to come from the town council, as the ultimate governing authority.
Okay, so at this time, I entertain a motion to Mr. Callahan. So, next, please. Moved by Councilwoman Mozik, second, by Councilwoman McCaffrey, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Members of the council, thank you so much.
Okay, oh, let's see. About 2012, we've got compliance questionnaire. Required to perform... Did we do this every year, to handle things, so we can figure out? So, that's a complete questionnaire. It's required to be completed by myself, all council persons, yes, required to be completed by myself, all council persons, city attorney, and chief police. So, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the compliance questionnaire. I saw it. Second. Second, I second. Second by, moved by Councilwoman Jenkins, second by Councilwoman Mozik, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries. Next, we got item B, discussing Attorney Mark Patillo's contract. What's it? Contract is... Your stack. And I wanted to say the name, but I don't have the cup.
There's a list of individuals that I've been working with from Johnson, Son, and Beatty. Ms. Pamela Harper, Carl, Greg, Johnson. Great, great. And, as we, without having to come back to the council board every time.
I have it on my pocket sheet, I don't have it. Can you get it off the pocket sheet? While she goes and get those documents, we're going to move to the human resource contract. I think this project started in October of... October of last year. Upon, initially met with John Bowden. He had worked for Holy Easter, Holy Mary, Holy Easter here in town. And what he does is he takes over this for the Human Resource Department, for, um, this company. And in that book with you will see all the different forms that he does, which are an application for employment, absentee report, employee warning, request and response, position certification, this goes on and on. And they are management of the healthcare insurance plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield, on which they will help help the town and save the town some money. Because, you know, our Blue Cross Blue Shield, our insurance bed increased drastically since I've been here. Right before I was here, it was round, it was round figures. Not exact figures. Before I was here, I think it was like $330 a month for employees, a month. Now, it's up to $619 a month. And the town can't afford to keep paying those high costs in healthcare insurance. So, Mr. Bowden, for a fee of $500 a month, will take over the health insurance aspect from the town, and the human resources. And we would have one person from this office working with one person in his office. And I've met with him, met with him the other day. I met him two or three times, he's been in this office, he's met with Shinoia, and he's met also with the other employees as well. And I think that he meets you also, Mr. Bowden? Every, once he... So, I think he's made his rounds since October. He wouldn't be here tonight if he's here. So, I told him, don't push yourself.
He said that, I think he was saying, you try, I want you to charge you. So, he said, I mean, and his people, that he has worked, he's been hard, getting high. He comes very highly in the red.
Yes, very highly. And so, this office is also in the process of moving across the street, so I didn't want to get into that. I did have Attorney Patillo to get the contract. Say about all the articles that's required. So, he approves the contract. You have any further questions? I think this is the detailed counter. But he's been providing these services since 1974. So, he's very sharp. So, at this time, I entertain a motion, this appear to the council. I'll make a motion. Carlyle has made a motion to hire the Human Resource Department for the benefit of selecting the... Helen Human Resource Department. Second by Councilwoman Mozik, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries. Please keep that behind for your future, for future purposes. Next, we have, back to item D. Which, Attorney Patillo, this is the name that would be helping him for future actions. Also, this Pamela Harper name is already on here for the contract. He listed the names on this contract. Because we get to call a special call meeting every time something happens. So, I just prefer to listen to people. So, we don't have to call a meeting every time we need to move forward. Maybe we will get him, unless we hire the opposite. We okay with that? Yes. And we hired her opposite. On the special call meeting that we're attending. If nothing further, I entertain a motion. To accept this contract of those persons listed who works along with him. It's a motion to accept Attorney Patillo's contract. And those individuals listed on ADNE, they have ADNE basis to work along with him. On ADNE basis, second.
I'll second.
All in favor? motion by CNI? Any opposed? So the motion carries. Next, we have discussing police reserves. Refreshing, I remember what happened in the last council meeting, when we brought the reserve meeting. Now, elaborate a bit.
We had a good chance to really get together last month. We kind of busy on some other things. I did talk, passed it, did talk with Mr. Patillo. I think he was talking about some academies, some classes, uh, in Bozer. I'm not able to get anything back from him, like I said. First of the month, and the last couple weeks, I've been busy on some other things. So, if we could pass this to the next time, maybe I could ask some literature, come to academy, and see exactly what it requires, and some other chiefs or shares that are practicing with the reserve, I was running department. I have talked with one sheriff, and he's going to give us some information through the academy, but I've not received anything yet.
There is a difference between what Bozer does and most of the other departments in this area. Bozer does, where there are officers, they need the ability to write citations, write tickets, stop you, make an arrest. Mr. Parrish, our deputies are, or reserve officers. Parades, fuel possessions, football games, basketball games, I guess.
You all have it in August, please.
Yeah, I'll try to give him, four o'clock as well.
Okay, so that will be table to the last meeting. Okay, next, D, discussing hiring, police hiring committee, and part-time. Councilwoman McCaffrey.
Okay, I understand there was some discussion about the police hiring committee at the last meeting, at the June 6th meeting. Police hiring committee was in place long before I became a council member. Unless this council chooses to change that, then I'm assuming it's still in place. The members of the police hiring committee, all, Joe, Ms. Michael, Michael Dunn, David Robinson, the late Chuck Talley, who can be the recommendation if you want to continue with that committee to replace, and myself. As far as I know, the committee is still in place. If this council chooses to change that, then the council needs to do that. But until that happens, it's still in place, and we need to take some recommendations for a replacement. I read in the minutes that, Ms. McCaffrey said he had been on the committee since him and Councilwoman McCaffrey, has not been on this committee this year. He even recommended Judge Michael, or Chuck Talley, as a replacement. So, you did, so he recommended Judge Michael to replace him. He's not, he's not on that committee, and has not been, since January 1st of this year.
I'm worried in this, we're going to, we're going to have a committee that will be set up, it is, and it will be, and in the best of all, sure. In this, we hire, there's not a few people, so if we are hiring a committee for...
That's really for after we hire, they manage after we hire, they don't hire.
Well, I think we need to have, we need to have a overhaul. It don't need to be police. Why aren't we just doing the police, why don't we have a hiring period? All the way, why did we just say, police? Why do we think he's the only one that needs to be helped?
Well, I was going to ask you that, because while the council, we're voting for it, I was going to ask, I mean, you were here, and Ms. Jenkins were here, the...
I didn't vote for them.
The three of us, three of us were not here.
It wasn't my, it wasn't my lady, Virginia.
Well, while...
But you voted against it.
Why was it set up?
We had to vote it against it. We've been discussing this, we're there since I've been on the council. And then we voted against it, you were...
And it's what we planned, and we did. And we just need to have either one that's going overall looking, everybody decides the town on it, or none.
My question is, why was this committee originally set up? Why was it set up? It was set up, but it was set up for a reason.
That's...
I don't see anything wrong with the committee, because I think several municipalities have them in place, if I'm not mistaken. We're not the only one that have them. Are we, cheap means?
I want to work with the town, I know what your policy says.
I know you work for the town, I know that. But you do, but you do know that there are other municipalities that have me set up? That's all I asked.
I really don't know what they hired, I really don't. Awesome. I mean, going by the town policy, I don't know what the policy says, I guess, but I... This was, this was something that was done in 2000, another part of 2009, early part of 2010, and the committee was, was formed, because it appeared that I continued to lose offers going to other agencies, or getting out of policing. It was basically said that I didn't have the ability to hire anybody. So, they formed this committee. And the committee hears the, meets the person, my source, and they come back to this committee. It's kind of a buffer between me and y'all. They, they meet them, interview them, and then come before the council and make a recommendation to hire. But it's, it's kind of like Ms. Mozik said. The mayor of the council prior started, and you gave that authority to these individuals. And the mayor of this council has the authority to stop it, and just go back to the original town policy. I take the applications, I advertise, I interview, I bring them before the council, and then I can hire or not hire. The council still has the last say anyway. I've been trying to get somebody hired for since February. I mean, we've not even had a meeting to hire anybody. So, it slowed the process down to a halt. I mean, there's more than Ms. Mozik on the hiring committee, but I gave her the application. I was called, talked to her, brought her the application, gave her the application, went to the school and discussed it, and that's, I heard. It's never been brought before the committee. This officer, another officer was, and it was, you know, he wasn't there to show us, so... I think the committee, sort of like Ms. Carlyle says, if we want to have a hiring committee, have a town hiring committee, any and all employees come to the town, go before the committee. I think you're just saying when the police department out. Y'all, y'all have the ultimate decision whether you're going to hire somebody or not, regardless of what the committee says. If the committee says no, the council shouldn't be hiring.
But it appears that this committee is not going to, because it has not produced what it's supposed to produce, so...
What did you say?
I said, I think that the committee needs to be dissolved, because it has not produced what it's supposed to be in it.
Okay, what is there a head on this?
Well, since January, I think we've been trying to hire somebody, and... They brought somebody before, apparently, Dunn, hers, in the different rooms, and they, they seem to have a problem with it. But we've been tied up all this length of time with it. So, I don't know where the holdup is, but we need to get on with it anymore, we need to do it.
Is there a chairperson for the hiring committees? Is it you, Ms. Mozik?
I am.
Why, why don't you call the committee to try to hire this part-time officer?
Because there's been some questions as to whether anybody's was going to be hired. We have to look at those and see, and I shouldn't even discuss them, but it's just cool. But we do have to look at those to see what cuts are going to be made because of the lawsuits that we have, and the money that we're having to pay out. So, there are some concerns as to whether we're going to be able to hire anybody. You have to get somebody out. Do you?
Well, I can't say that's one.
If we're not discussing, we're not discussing. I don't think it's going to come to that.
Well, but you don't know that. But you don't know that. But you, you do know it is a good, very good possibility, right?
I really...
I mean, it's amazing to me how some of us here so lack of that leisure, and act like you're not aware of certain things, when you want to go to work on somebody else. I have not called the committee, because there's a very, very good chance of not to make some budget cuts, based on all of these lawsuits that we're facing, and all the money that we're having to pay out. That's the bottom line. So, that's why I have to call the committee, to hire, to look to hire anybody. Would be fair to hire somebody, and they'll live all next month.
And that's generated through the police department, meaning the lawsuits.
Yes.
Yeah, we have one.
I mean, I didn't mean to bring it up, but it's, it's a fact. You know, I'm not living in a world where we're denied, I don't get selected by leisure. This is back to... Yeah, an action to be taken, it's probably going to make someone to sell the hiring committee. Maybe she want to make a motion to the committee to be, uh, social security.
Yeah, I want to make that motion, that we just dissolve it, and start with the hiring forever. Figure to, oh, anybody's hired for the town of Homer. Go, go forward. We should not be discriminating against this, that, and the other, everywhere.
Want to dissolve the police hiring committee?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Show hands, aye. Oppose? It's not to my advantage to vote, because Councilman Wade has a representative on their floor, so it will be table to his here. Because everybody chose representative for that board, he's not here to speak on it.
And it did, and we have a problem with this one, so I'm not going to vote for it, so let people to be on this one here. And I'll stop, so something's going to be in this time.
I'll stop. So, it's going to be timed, so what I would do is I'll place that on next month, so generally.
And hopefully, Mr. Wade will be here?
Hopefully, Mr. Wade will be here, of course. And that would not be in the best interest of this country. Okay? Next, we have the mayor's report. On, receiving a notice back in April, for Wednesday, July 10, 2013, that the town of Homer has a request to receive a 2013 Energy Conservation System of the Year award. I'm going to travel to Lake Charles tomorrow, to be there early in the morning to receive, hoping I will receive, it's only one other municipality that qualifies for this award. I am trying to figure out, I remember some things we did, I don't know exactly what we did with the grant committee, and with all the water projects we've done, and all the upgrades for the last couple of years, that qualifies for this award, they didn't give it much. So, I'll come back to the next council meeting, and tell you some drawing of the laws, and also what credentials should make us qualify for this award. And I thought that was the other thing that I received in the matter. It's for 2013 Energy Conservation System of the Year, from the North Award. It's town of Homer and one other municipality in the state. It is town of Homer and one of the municipalities in the state, and I don't know that it, they didn't do that.
Is it like that?
It's... Lake Charles.
Is it Lake Charles? You started there.
Yeah, Lake Charles. Also, on this month, the month started last month, a gentleman from Horizon Rovers Park, and he's asking, he's willing to take town's money to install some towers on an elevated water tank, so we will be able to have four G speed here in the town of Homer. So, I thought that was something positive as well. So we're in negotiations to have the same speed as the water. So we're working, uh, to make that happen. I don't want to give you any nanks or anything. Also, I asked him to contact, uh, Mr. Butcher, and I'm going to place him in contact with Mr. Walter, to see if we can have this project done in the next two or three months. And like I said, he will take the town of Homer for putting those antennas on.
Maybe we'll have to be on the new, um, little water tank.
Yes, because the O will be gone by the... Because we had the process of getting the O in there, and it will take it down. Nothing on the old tank. And that'd be a great ice water that's gone. The old tank, it, Joe Joe Michael's, Memorial Park, it's planned for you to move in the next couple of weeks. Well, look, we say months, so everything works slower, slower than the grant line. Also, uh, water collections for two, for June two thousand thirteen, uh, was a hundred thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Sales tax check was eighty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars. And our property tax is one thousand, three hundred and nine twelve ninety-six cents. The executive session item was taken care of without special call meeting on Wednesday, so if nothing else, we will adjourn. Six thirty. I just moved. I'll move. Second, all right, all in favor?
Okay, people, that's a wrap.